Watch and all my clocks, so I think we'll go ahead and get going. Greetings. Now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. Let the record show, we have Commissioners Glenn Winkle, Commissioner Lawler, Commissioner Li, or excuse me, Commissioner Nye, and Commissioner Winter present. Commissioner Akall and Commissioner Ellis are absent and excused. So we will move on to Commission Communications. Commission, are there any communications this evening? I see none, so we will move on to Staff Communications. Staff?
Good evening, Chair McCann, Anna Slatinsky, Planning Division Manager from the City of Beaverton. I do not have any staff communications this evening.
All right, thank you. So moving right along, our only agenda item of the night is a work session on the Cooper Mountain Community Plan Development Code Updates. The order of the work session tonight will be as follows. We will begin with the city staff presentation, followed by discussion and questions of staff by commission. The Planning Commission will then hear public comments regarding the work session item. Individual comments will be limited to five minutes and must be directed toward the work session item. The commission may ask additional questions of individuals providing comments of staff. So we will now begin with the staff community or staff presentation presented by Senior Planner Rob Zoller and Long Range Planner Brian Martin. Sorry, Rob.
That's okay. And everyone can see that. Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, Chair McCann and Commissioners. I'm Rob Zeller, the Project Manager for the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. Tonight, I'm joined by several members of the Cooper Mountain team, including Brian Martin, Long Range Planning Manager, Anna Slatinsky, Planning Division Manager, Alyssa Maxwell, Capital Planning Projects Manager, and Brittany Gata, Associate Planner, all of whom may participate in the discussion. The Cooper Mountain Community Plan Project is planning for an expansion area. We are here tonight to seek your feedback on draft development code updates for the expansion area. Because there is a lot of material to go through, we plan to pause partway through the presentation to allow questions and comments from Commissioners as we have done with the last several work sessions. Once that discussion is complete, we would resume the presentation and Commissioners would have an opportunity for a second round of questions and comments. Does the Chair support that format for the work session?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. This is our fourth trip to the Planning Commission to review content and see comments since the draft code came out in January. After we receive your feedback tonight, we'll work on code updates in preparation for the June 18th City Council Work Session. The June 18th Work Session is the last scheduled work session for council to review the code. We'll use the summer to refine the code and draft the staff report. It is possible that we will schedule one more Planning Commission Work Session as a last look at the code before the Planning Commission Hearing on October 16th. It is our goal to then hold the City Council Hearing on December 30th. Tonight, the first part of the presentation will focus on tree code updates. After we pause for discussion, we'll present updates to the resource overlay code and then briefly updates to a few other code sections before we ask our second set of questions. I will begin with the code updates for trees and vegetation. The tree code for Cooper Mountain proposes rules that aim to preserve existing trees, expand the tree canopy to reach a forty percent tree canopy target in the planned area outside the nature park, and provide some development flexibility on sites with a lot of trees. When the code mentions tree preservation, it refers to retaining existing trees and tree canopy on the site. The minimum tree preservation percentages are sixty-five percent of existing tree canopy within the resource overlay and forty percent of existing tree canopy outside the resource overlay. Whereas tree preservation refers to retaining existing trees on the site, minimum tree canopy standards focus on ensuring the site has sufficient tree canopy either now or in the future. This can be achieved using tree preservation, tree planting, or a combination of preservation and planting. The draft proposed rules require sixty-five percent tree canopy inside the resource overlay. That concludes a review of the general tree code approach. Tonight, we would like to discuss five updates to the tree code. Each tree code update is summarized briefly in the May third memo. The actual code updates are in Attachment A of your packet. After we present the tree code updates, we will ask if you support the staff recommendation that would allow a wider variety of trees to count toward tree preservation requirements. Code Updates One and Two address this topic. We will also ask if you support including multipliers for larger trees so that they count more toward minimum requirements for tree preservation. Code Update Three addresses this topic. And we will ask if you support updates to tree preservation guidelines that allow applicants to consider a wider range of forest conditions, including understory and potential for wind throw. Code Updates Four and Five address this topic. The first update refers to simplified tree definitions. The January draft code included five tree condition definitions. In some cases, good and fair trees could be used to meet a target; in other cases, only good trees counted. Further complicating matters is that sometimes a good tree can become a fair tree over time, and a fair tree could become a good tree with proper abatement. In fact, this logic could be applied to almost all of the original tree health definitions. To simplify matters, we updated the code so that instead of regulating trees by whether they are in good, fair, poor, or very poor condition, instead, we define dying dead and hazardous trees. If a tree is not dying dead or hazardous, then it count towards preservation and canopy standards and guidelines. This approach simplifies the inventory process, saves even more higher DBH trees, and in doing so, prioritizes the ecological functions of the existing forest. For example, in the January draft code, trees in fair condition were not eligible to meet the minimum tree canopy standard. To meet the canopy standard, the applicant would likely have to remove the trees in fair condition, potentially large trees, and replace them with saplings, which could take decades to grow to replace the ecological functions of the original trees. The second update refers to non-native trees. The January code only counted native trees towards minimum tree preservation requirements inside the resource overlay. For the same reason as described in the previous example, to meet the canopy standard, the applicant would have been required to remove non-native trees and replace them with native saplings to meet tree canopy requirements. To avoid or minimize this outcome, the code now allows non-native trees in the resource overlay to count towards the minimum tree preservation and tree canopy requirements. The third update refers to incentives to save larger trees. The January draft code included multipliers based on species only as an incentive preservation. This multiplier could be used for five species, to be exact. Multipliers mean tree canopy preserved from high-value trees count more towards the standard than other trees. After receiving feedback that the code should consider special protections to preserve existing trees with a high DBH, we've updated the code to include multipliers to incentivize the preservation of large trees. If the DBH of a tree is greater than twenty inches and less than thirty-six inches, then a one-point-five multiplier can be applied toward the tree preservation requirement. And if the DBH of a tree is thirty-six inches or greater, then that multiplier is two. The fourth update refers to forest resilience. The January code provided guidance for forests with unique or special circumstances, such as a special habitat of concern like an oaks of manna. However, it did not provide guidance when a landscape did not have special or unique circumstances. As a result, the code has been updated to include new guidelines that promote healthy and resilient forests by prioritizing the preservation of a mix of native tree species, ages, and sizes, understory trees that support natural succession, and understory shrubs that provide food for wildlife, flowers for native pollinators, and organic material to build healthier soil. The fifth update refers to trees vulnerable to wind throw. The January code provided limited guidance on addressing risks associated with trees vulnerable to wind throw. Based on feedback from the Planning Commission and the community, we updated tree preservation guidelines to require that developments avoid or minimize the preservation of trees vulnerable to wind throw, near structures and facilities within striking range of the trees, and roads, walkways, and trails frequently accessed by people. Characteristics that increase the likelihood of wind throw vary by species and are described in the draft code. They include factors such as a high tree height to diameter ratio, shallow root systems or poor horizontal root growth, which limits the anchoring ability of the tree, and location in a thin stand or stand adjacent to open landscapes such as exposed slopes, clear cuts, or water bodies where high winds may accelerate as they move over the landscape. That brings us to the first part of the discussion. Our first question is, do you support the staff recommendation that would allow a wider variety of trees to count toward tree preservation requirements, multipliers for larger trees so they count more toward minimum requirements for tree preservation, and updated tree preservation guidelines that allow applicants to consider a wider range of forest conditions, including understory and potential for wind throw? And our second question is, do you have other comments, including whether the draft tree code will meet the goals to promote future tree canopy while allowing development? And I can pause for discussion if you'd like me to stop sharing. I can do that too.
Um, Commission members, does anyone have questions or comments at this point or want to speak to any of these questions? Um, I'll speak. Rob, uh, I personally, I do absolutely support the um, kind of item number one of allowing a wider variety of trees um, to be kind of changing the language to incorporate non-native species, you know, expecting non, not invasive, but non-native, I think is important because we're really talking about canopy coverage and we're talking about habitat area and even non-natives trees do provide that. Um, and I appreciate the language that prioritize natives, but allowed for them, non-natives, to be part of that as well. Um, I personally do um, support the idea of additional multipliers for the larger species. I think it's good to encourage people to keep those larger trees. Um, I did have a question and I tried to dig through the code to find it of whether or not, you know, the adding kind of the multiplier, sort of the carrot approach to preserving of trees. Um, is there any sort of um, negative aspect to remove, you know, that kind of further encourages people to remove trees? Some cities have a higher level of replacement value. If you remove a larger tree, then it kind of multiplies in a different way. If you remove it, you have to mitigate more for that tree um, or pay into a fund or, you know, other things of that nature when you start removing some of these large trees, which is kind of the stick side.
Yeah.
The incentive program.
Uh, we are, we are starting to talk about those things and they, they weren't quite ready for prime time, so we didn't put them in here. Um, I can say that, you know, something that we were exploring, that we were comfortable with is maybe basing tree replacement standards based on every six inches of DBH removed. Um, if you have thoughts about that, that's, that's something, it's not in the packet now, but it is something we're looking at.
Well, I do think it is important to preserve mature trees and, and while having a benefit to how much, you know, mitigation you have to do is great, um, in some cases. And, and this may get to kind of a broader statement about the city, you know, of, um, there's not, you know, if the tree doesn't fall into a particular category in some cases outside of, say, a preservation overlay kind of situation, um, there's not a lot that the city can do to stop removal of big mature trees. And, and as was pointed out in a lot of the language, the materials we had today is, you know, even if you mitigate for removal of a large tree, it takes decades um, to, to kind of make up for that. So I do think it is worthwhile to possible the preservation of large mature trees. Uh, we do need them from a climate perspective. And I think a lot of times teams find a way to still get the development in that they need and they want um, while preserving a lot of those trees, uh, but they need, I've, I've seen having incentives on both sides is kind of helpful.
Okay, great. And I think, um, you know, I would expect we would come back this summer and we would, we would ask for, uh, for you all to focus on, on that section. And I think that's where really making sure we have clear approval criteria will help staff evaluate, um, you know, whether it should be, whether, where and how it should be allowed to remove some of the larger trees. So it's not quite simple. It's just knocking down something large.
Right, right. Yeah. Um, on your last question, I think that some of the, the language around the um, protection of understory and things like that was, was great. I think that is um, kind of starting to get to what you're really trying to achieve in this area and, and the resource area. And again, maybe the language was in there and I didn't see it, but in terms of the wind throw, I understand, you know, if you have sort of small stands existing or trees on their own that are probably going to be prone to wind throw based on their growing condition. That's one thing um, to be careful about. I guess what I was wondering was sometimes we are creating trees that become vulnerable to wind throw because we remove the outside of the stand. Um, so we actually are creating a condition where those trees are going to be more susceptible. And I'm not sure that I understood how the language was going to protect from that. Um, and, and I, I do know we're kind of getting into a balancing act of probably needing to remove some vegetation to allow for the development that's intended. But at the same time, uh, you know, maybe this is too complicated of a thing to pick up in code, but essentially we're kind of creating, you know, we have the, we're at risk of creating trees that are going to be prone to wind throw. And I think the downside would be is if people then say, well, you know, let's take them all out so that we don't have a potential risk that these trees will come down because we've already removed the outer edge, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. And that's, um, that's also something we're looking at is what is that threshold where a certain percentage is taken out to avoid that? And now it's, the impact is larger and we need to think more carefully about that removal. So we will definitely have the opportunity to look at that this summer. But in the meantime, we can also look at the existing language and, and just take a closer look at wind throw and talk to our urban forester and see if there's anything we can do to kind of address that point.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's, yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly how you go about that and we don't want to remove on trees unnecessarily. Um, and, you know, hopefully teams have arborists who are helping also inform on a case-by-case basis. But, but maybe there's some language there around how that gets approached.
Well, I'll add to that an arborist report would be required with the applications for these.
Yeah. Um, and so those are my opinions on questions one A. I don't know if anyone else has thoughts and wants to speak up? Commission, Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
I was basically just gonna agree with what you were saying, Chair McCann. I think um, these are really good um, incentives and good compromises. And it will, I think, improve what we're trying to achieve. So I'm, I think it's great. I'm in favor.
Commissioner Winter?
I'd like to add in that I, one of my concerns over the years has always been wind throw. Challenge we have, because I've always wondered how, what kind of um, accountability the city has when we do these developments and we do these strategies that create a possibility price rank that we've never addressed before, but we're aggressive now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I think, I think maybe we are out of comments.
Okay, thank you. I can move on to the second part. Okay, for the second part of the presentation, I'll start with the updates to the resource overlay code section before briefly discussing other code updates described in Attachment A of your packet. On this slide is a map of the resource overlay. As a reminder, the boundary is based on planning level assessments. The overlay includes riparian classes one and two and upland habitat class A and B. These are habitat areas near water features and in areas of forested habitat. The methodology is based on Metro's Title XIII Nature in Neighborhoods requirements. As required by Metro, existing forest canopy was evaluated as of December 13th, 2018, the date the urban growth boundary was expanded to include this area. On this slide, um, we are looking at an example of a lot that is being divided for development to build housing. Oh, sorry. Let's see if I can turn on my pointer. I keep skipping ahead, so I'll use the cursor. Uh, the gray area represents the area inside the overlay. During a land division, eighty percent of the overlay, that is this black box, uh, would be required to be protected from disturbance and separated into a tract. The remaining twenty percent, the smaller gray rectangle, um, can be disturbed for land development if mitigation planting is provided. Mitigation planting has a required number of plants based on how much area was disturbed. We'd like planting to occur in the overlay to enhance those habitat areas, but applicants have flexibility in where they decide to do the planting. In this twenty percent is where the applicant can build roads and housing. An example of a project that would likely come through for alternative review could be a project that requires a road crossing the resource overlay to reach an area of the property that's available for development. If that access would disturb more than twenty percent of the overlay in a property, then the project would need to go through alternative review to show that the impacts are necessary to build housing. In this case, an applicant needs to demonstrate that they can't avoid the disturbance and also demonstrate that they will minimize impacts, such as aligning the road to avoid the largest trees or other habitat areas in addition to including a mitigation plan. The city's Natural Resources Report was prepared, uh, prepared with planning level data and did not include a detailed evaluation of individual properties. Proposed code now clarifies the process that property owners can use to apply for changes to the boundary of the overlay based on more site-specific information. Process requires concurrence from the Department of State Land or Clean Water Services. This is the same process that owners can use today to map resources on their property. Property owners work with DSL and CWS to delineate wetlands and waters. They can work with those agencies to clarify the resources on their property. After a property is annexed into the city, we can then receive an application to revise the boundary of the overlay. For example, reclassification of a mapped feature from a perennial stream to an intermittent or ephemeral stream could change the boundary of the riparian and upland habitat areas associated with that feature. Other code updates include refinements to open space requirements and landscape buffers in Chapter 60. For example, the draft code requires the landscape buffers between different uses rather than at the edges of zones, which is the approach used in the current code. For example, a non-residential use of budding a single detached home would be required to provide a ten-foot buffer with a full screen. In addition, the draft code includes a buffer requirement for properties budding the Cooper Mountain Nature Park. Chapter 60 also includes lighting updates, which add lighting requirements for pedestrian facilities within a public park near a vehicular maneuvering area. And city staff continue to meet with THPRD staff to determine which other trails or trail segments in the planned area need to be lit because the trail serves a significant transportation purpose. Regarding Cooper Mountain Parks Applications, the draft code now includes updated approval criteria that requires a non-auto Regarding Cooper Mountain Parks applications, the draft code now includes updated approval criteria that requires a non-auto accessible route to a park. And that brings us to the second part of the discussion and the end of this presentation. Our questions are, do you have further comments or questions about development rules for the resource overlay? Are you comfortable using the approval criteria and the alternative review process for developments that require greater disturbance in the resource overlay? Do you support code updates related to open space and landscape buffers, lighting parks, or any other code sections, including those discussed at the May first meeting? At last, are there areas of the comprehensive plan or development code where you would like to have more information or discussion before the public hearing scheduled in October? Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments on these? I'm seeing none. Do you support the code updates? I'm seeing nods. Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
I do support the updates and I think staff's obviously put a lot of thought into designing this. So thank you for all your hard work. I think, I think it's great. I don't have any concerns.
Commissioner Lawler?
Yeah, I'll also compliment staff because you received a lot of feedback from the landowners about how to designate individual, how individual properties were designated with the resource overlay. And I think it's with your, your comment also, I think resonates that, you know, the city can't really change this until the land is annexed. And so then it's eligible for these code provisions to be applied to the properties. You've created type one procedures which are, I think a lot of the folks are, who've written in comment letters have indicated that they believe that there's a misalignment of some mapping resources and you've addressed that by allowing them, you know, the simplest procedure. And then if there is more of a complex reasoning behind the resource overlay designation, then you've given them alternatives. So I think you've done a great job, I think, of addressing a lot of the concerns about how the resource overlay may pertain to individual properties and providing them with recourse once the land is annexed. So I, I compliment you on that especially.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or thoughts from the commission? Right, I'm not seeing any around. I think that is. Is it? Oh, Commissioner Lawler?
I'd just make one more comment. I was about the lighting. You know, we've, in other land use cases, development that has occurred in the South Cooper Mountain area, we were always sensitive to the fact that there was lighting adjoining nature trails and, you know, we had to make special provisions for that. And so I also think it's great that you picked that, the staff has picked that up as a, a criteria in advance. So we will not need to do, address that on a case by case basis for the soft, the soft sided kind of trails that I think are going to be common in here that are not quote unquote transportation routes. So I think that was a great pickup by staff as well. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Agreed. All right, anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, I think then we will move on to public testimony. So now is the time for public comments on the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. Let me see here, all right. The attendees, it looks like we have Jordan Ramis Information Technology. Would you like to speak? Please begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Ed Trumphy. I work for the law firm of Jordan Ramis. That's why the information technology name, it pops up. I don't know how to change it.
All right.
I, I'm here actually to speak for two different clients. And I'll try to keep it to five minutes total, but I would ask that if I do go over, I'll definitely be less than ten. The, the first client is, I'm speaking for is, is the Kobe family, who is the largest property owner in the South Cooper Mountain Community Plan area with one hundred ninety-four acres. The family has long planned to develop their property with a mix of housing densities consistent with Metro's designation of neighborhood, which was given to it when the property was brought into the urban growth boundary. The proposed zoning and, and, and especially the resource area overlays fall short by, there's, there's one piece which is a little outside of the, the, the resource overlay, but it's an area surrounded primarily by resource overlay that you're proposing not to provide city utilities, public utilities for. And we think that that is, is an error. And the city needs to reduce the area that is mapped for the natural resource protection and extend water and sewer services to all the buildable areas in the Kobe's property. You're probably aware that Metro has produced, has proposed to purchase a portion of the property, probably the night, the northern half of it, but has reduced the amount of its offer from fair market value of neighborhood property based on the city's proposed zoning. Whether that's intentional or not, the efforts of the city and Metro is a classic case of, of taking a value that's caused by the proposed regulations. The city is reducing the value by not extending water and sewer, as I said, but also by, but also by providing a, a very large overlay of the natural resources protection area. And the city has the duty to provide public services to all of the developable land within the South Cooper Mountain Plan area on equal terms. The city of Salem tried to do the, a similar thing when it zoned property that was to, in order to reduce its value before the state purchased the property in the Capitol Mall about sixty-five years ago. It was nineteen sixty, sixty-one. The US District Court held that Salem thereby took the property without due process of law and without payment of just compensation. And it declared the zoning void in that case. That was Robertson versus City of Salem, one ninety-one federal supplement, six oh four, nineteen sixty-one decision. And the, the result of your proposed overlay zones is less housing. The city needs to shift its focus from maximizing natural resource protection to maximizing housing production. The city's actions are contrary to the state's important goals for housing production. And the city's actions are at risk of a variety of legal complaints arising from the violations of state laws promoting housing production as well as the uncompensated takings. We urge the city to take control of this project, make housing a primary goal, and instruct staff to provide public utilities to all the lands zoned for housing, including the natural resource areas and the lands surrounded by it that are not subject to the overlay. And to dial back the natural resource protections to the level that clean water services requires in its overlay prior to the city's move to annex this property. That's what I'd finished with the Kobe part, and I would like to speak now about the Dean Sparks property, which is the thirty acres in the southwest corner of the plan area. It's an unorthodox zoning proposal for the property in that a large portion of it is zoned for commercial. Sometimes I'll call it community service because that's what it was when I started looking at this product, process and the mapping names have changed. But I don't know that the zoning's changed very much. This property is right at the edge of the UGB. And putting ten acres of this commercial service and mixed commercial and residential at the edge of the UGB is contrary to the fundamental rule that retail follows rooftops. The city's own market study explained this problem and I'll quote from it. Disadvantages for the non, for commercial development include the area's location at the fringe of the region, relatively low densities, lack of transit, and lack of major destinations aside from the nature park to draw visitors from outside Cooper Mountain. That's the end of the quote. The report concludes that only one half to two acres of commercial property are needed out there and recommends that it be located on Southwest Hundred Seventy-Fifth Avenue. Eco Northwest prepared that study and the city should follow the recommendations of its own experts in that. Beneficial economic use is a touchstone of constitutional fairness of how the, this land is being regulated. And the Sparks do recognize the potential for residential in the community service zone. But the city is seeking, if the city's seeking housing, then it should zone more of the site for multifamily housing. In addition, a city demands that the commercial be included in the housing means that neither is going to be constructed in large part because the draft code says that the commercial part has to be built first. Section twenty, twenty-two, thirty-two of, of the code provides that the commercial has to be built before the housing is. And that simply goes against the, the state's desire to get housing built and get it built relatively quickly because housing's needed. If the city would like to put more commercial on this site, then it should add a public subsidy. And as an example, there's this thing called the vertical housing tax credits, which abate property taxes on the residential apartments or other housing units in order to subsidize the commercial development and allow it to take place. I've personally represented a developer in the Salem area who had this property, the same kind of problem and could not get a commercial person to be interested in the commercial part. And so we had to go and get a variance to develop it entirely residential, which was not an easy thing. And was denied by the city, went up to Luba and, and reversed by Luba in order to get it done the way that makes economic and, and development sense. It's, this is not a threat. The city, the city of Salem thought I was threatening them, but it's not. The city of Salem paid my attorney's fees for that under the statutes that have been adopted. And I'm, I, I will talk to your city attorney about that because that's not something I like doing. I represent cities too. I represent three or four cities and I'm constantly telling them, no, you can't do things like that. A related problem is the north-south street planned through the Sparks property that runs near but not along the west boundary. That leaves only an under, under buildable narrow strip west of the street. And further north, the street curves to the northeast and bisects the area zone for high density residential. Again, that cuts, cuts off an useless arc of land that will be very difficult to build into height, into multifamily housing. So the new right of way should be shifted to the east or west. And the better is to put it all the way to the west edge of the Sparks property to straddle the western boundary so that each owner pays their half share of the, the street property cost. In addition, the city intends to use approximately one-third of the Sparks property for a public park. That amount is not proportional to the impact of the development of the remainder of the Sparks property. To date, there's no indication that the park's provider will pay fair value for the property. And in fact, appraisers who would appraise that property for, for purchase as a park, they're required by their ethics rules to value the property at the highest and best use allowed under the zoning. So by zoning it park, you are devaluing it. I'm involved in some litigation between a city and a school district where one was selling to the other and they designated it as a park. And the other was very, very deeply disappointed in the, in the price to the extent that they're now in litigation, which really doesn't happen often and you should avoid that kind of problem. Again, I represent cities and other governments and don't like that when those kinds of things happen. So zoning one-third of the property for the public park, reducing its value is outside the realm of constitutionally required fairness. And by devaluing the property, it, it's not constitutionally defensible. So to summarize, our clients and their professional advisors are unanimous that the city's not considering the damage to property value and what's constitutionally defensible. Their fundamental mistakes in the proposed zoning for the property. The city should heed the astute advice of Eco Northwest, which is based on the centuries of development experience regarding the location of viable commercial and retail space. Please revise the zoning maps to make the development feasible and to require the constitutional fairness in committing the property to public use. Thank you, and I hope I didn't run over my time.
Thank you. Are there any, Commissioner, are there any questions of the speaker? No, it's just not appeared there at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, it looks like we have one other speaker this evening, John Griffiths. The commission calls you to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is John Griffiths. My address is one zero two four five Southwest Hundred Fifty-Third Avenue in Beaverton. Tonight, I'm here representing the friends of Cooper Mountain Nature Park. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We have submitted written testimony for your consideration, so my remarks tonight will be very brief. We have reviewed the material submitted by staff for your consideration this evening. We support staff's recommendations related to the tree code. We also support staff's proposed processes for the resource overlay, including using the approval criteria in the alternative review process for developments that require greater disturbance of the resource overlay. Finally, we believe the staff has proposed code updates in question three that realistically work in today's development world. Given that development needs to occur to meet forecasted housing needs, we find that staff's proposals do a good job relative to both enabling development within the Cooper Mountain Community Plan area in line with Metro's density requirements, while also affording protections to the identified significant national, natural resource areas within that same area. Overall, we ask that the Planning Commission strongly supports staff's recommendations as the Cooper Mountain Community Plan and its implementing code moves forward to the City Council for ratification. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Does commission members have any questions of the speaker? Does not appear so. Thank you very much. It looks like we have one more person who wishes to speak. The commission calls Sarah to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Nathan and Sarah Smith, one nine eight eight Southwest Gosner Road. And we are, I guess, wondering why and how to get the North Cooper Mountain included in the current plan. We are obviously within that zone. We've been in, inside the urban growth boundaries, but zoned as future development for the past twenty-two years. And we see the other areas moving forward, which is great. We're excited to see that happening. We're not sure why the North Cooper Mountain, which is a reasonably small area, isn't just included in this current proposal. And we request that it be included as part of the current Cooper Mountain proposal.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for the speaker? It does not appear that there are. Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, so I believe that is the end of our work session. Unless there are any final Uh, unless there are any final comments or questions? Nope, all right, so then we will be adjourned. It is, we are adjourned at seven fifteen PM. Thank you.